Okay, Ms. Hawley.
All councilors present with Councilor V. Hill previously requesting to be excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Councilor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda excusing Councilor V. Hill.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have the citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we have citizens come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to make any comments that you have, and I ask that you keep it within three minutes. If you are talking past three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments and have a seat, okay? The first person we have is, is it Beth Kenner?
Thank you. My name's Beth Kenny and I live at 813 Hunt Avenue here in Alamosa. And I came tonight to remind, I would like to remind the City Council about the global climate strike this week, created by young people across the world who feel like their futures are being severely limited by the climate crisis. They see that ninety-seven percent of actively publishing climate scientists believe that climate warming is a result of human activity. The latest IPCC report published in October 2018 gave the world twelve years to turn around expanding greenhouse emissions if we are to avert catastrophic impacts such as food shortages, ongoing fires, droughts, hurricanes, vastly increased numbers of climate refugees, to say nothing of over one million species going extinct, and the possible ultimate collapse of the biodiversity that humans rely on. Estimates of the financial impact of climate change in the United States, including loss of homes, forests, lives, crops, et cetera, is already approaching $250 billion yearly, with the amount vastly increasing if no action is taken. Research also shows the cost of doing nothing is higher than the cost of addressing this crisis head-on as soon as possible. There are now strikes planned in Alamosa this Friday, September 20th, as well as in over eight hundred places in the United States and in over a hundred and seventeen countries across the world. On Friday, September 20th, there is a rally at noon at the corner of Richardson Avenue and Highway 160 in Alamosa. And then also on Friday, September 20th, at 6:00 PM in Room 227 of the ASU Art Building. And again, on Sunday, September 22nd, at 1:00 PM at the Alamosa Presbyterian Church at 3:30 San Juan. There is a showing of the climate documentary from Paris to Pittsburgh, followed by discussion of what has been, is being, and could be done locally to address the climate crisis. We hope that this discussion will be the beginning of exploration of ways the city of Alamosa could actively address climate disruption here. As such, we invite any City Council members and members of the audience to come and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, up next, we have Ms. Ruthie Brown.
Good evening, my name's Ruthie Brown. I live at 711 State Avenue. So, sometimes when a person comes to City Council meeting and gives their opinion, and if it's not the same as what you believe, it feels like it's my way or the highway. And so, I'm not, I'm not smart enough, or do I have enough time to do a study or anything like that? I just don't have that kind of time. But what I do do is talk to a lot of people every single day. And so, I think I have some street smarts. And so, and that being said, I believe that our police force needs to be looked at every single year, and something needs to be done, if it's not paid, then it's benefits, to get us to a full police force where we are protected. Come down to my building and see what I'm having to do and spend on my property to make it safe and clean. So, it's not my way or the highway. No one answered my questions on landscaping that I mentioned two weeks ago. I was, I, when I listened to City Council meetings afterwards, I think it was said that I had Andy's number and I had Jeremy's number. So, I was talking to Andy, and to be honest, I don't think he knew what I was talking about and assumed that all the shrubs and stuff were on drip irrigation. To the best of my knowledge, the drip irrigation hadn't worked for over two years. And now the shrubs are gone. I imagine they're just thrown away and we've got some nice rock out there. But I guess that leads me to wonder, what is gonna happen with the rest of the shrubs? And what is gonna happen to the trees and shrubs out across from the bowling alley? And my question is, how many times do the taxpayers have to pay for new landscaping? Because I can think of a minimum of three in recent years. And it's like, we won't hire someone and give them the expertise, or give them the inspiration to take care of things. And I don't get it. So, we can, we can destroy it all, we can plan it again, and then we can destroy it all again and plan it again. So, I don't, I don't know who gets to make all of those decisions, but I'm kinda tired of paying for it. And then on vehicle traffic and foot traffic, being different on State Avenue compared to downtown, but it's not different on Hunt Avenue? I'd like to see that study. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, since we don't have any other comment cards, I'll turn it back over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think over the course of the last several years, Ruthie has shared these concerns in some of the locations that she's indicated. And we've answered those questions, both in these meetings and through emails. So, for example, there is frustration over the landscaping being removed at the, where the one-way split occurs where the clock is by Monterey. We were able to answer those questions in regards to one of the utilities was going through and we needed to remove those. I'm not aware of the other landscaping that she's talking about in regards to us ruining it. As council knows, through the Water Smarts Committee, they had identified five locations to be updated from a landscaping perspective, either because the landscaping wasn't as attractive as it could be, or it was not water smart, or there was just dirt. And so, we received a grant, and those projects were presented to council for us to move forward. And so, that's what the city is doing at this point in time. We continue to have a difference of opinion in regards to the knowledge and skills and opportunities that our staff has when it comes to landscaping. We feel that our staff is qualified and has the knowledge. And if they don't, we've got a training budget that affords them the opportunity to learn what they may need to know from a landscaping perspective. And so, we're excited about the projects and to look at beautification of the gateways and those aspects. I think the concern about foot traffic on Hunt, I have to make a bit of an assumption here, so I could be wrong in regards to what that concern is. I'm assuming that that is related to Hunt Street connecting Cole Park to the downtown, and that's why it was included in the downtown plan. The main reason for that is we get thousands of visitors to Cole Park, and we're not connecting them to the downtown businesses. So, they're driving to the park and then they're leaving town. And we're not seeing the impact from a community perspective that could exist there. And so, that was a key connection into the downtown for that perspective. And so, have to make a bit of a, an assumption there. In regards to the police, you know, I apologize if the impression is given the highway, or my way or the highway. But quite simply, we just have differences of opinions. And fortunately, unfortunately, I have more direct knowledge on personnel items when people are coming and going, and why some of those decisions are being made, and what's driving our workforce, as well as what the numbers are from a comparable market analysis. So, it's not a matter of not listening and understanding what different opinions might be. But when that information is not consistent with the facts that we have before us, we still feel that we are okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have regular business. We have a presentation from an outside agency. Heather, did you wanna say anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Okay. Up next, we have Consent Calendar A. Council Gregel?
I'll make a motion, we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, start voting. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you all for catching that, appreciate it, thank you. All right, now, we have regular business.
Thank you, Mayor. The GFWC contacted Kelly Bailey about an amazing opportunity to look at trying to bring some art here to Alamosa. And so, without further delay, they do have a PowerPoint and will let them present those ideas to City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmen and Women and others. What? Can you hear me? Okay, okay, I'll get closer. Several members of the GFWC Women's Citizenship Club are here this evening. Allow me to tell you just who we are. I am Linda Kozart, currently the President. Hopefully, you have already heard something about us. We are the local club affiliated with the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which is an international organization that is dedicated to community improvement and beautification. Remember those words, "community, beautification." We have served Alamosa for ninety-six years, supporting such things as a library in Tucasa, public schools, wildlife refuges, health fairs, and others. Annually, we provide scholarships to both ASU and TSJC. We've come here tonight because we want to share with you an idea, a big idea and a very good idea. You see, we have begun to think and plan a project that would further beautify our lovely city and the valley, and it would also recognize one of our own homegrown artists. She is our native daughter. Mary Russell is the chairman of our committee that dealing, that is dealing with this idea that we are calling the Jocelyn Russell Sandhill Crane Project. Mary has much more information to share with you. Thank you for inviting us to come and tell you about this. And I'll turn it to Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. As Linda said, I'm Mary Russell, and you could say I have a vested interest. I don't really, but I'm related to Jocelyn Russell. She's my sister-in-law. Her brother is here in the audience with us. And as Linda said, what she alluded to was that we would like to bring a crane monument to the San Luis Valley and to the city of Alamosa. And so, we are titling this project Cranes in Flight, so you can look at the PowerPoint. So, the first, the project will be proposed at Life and a Half. It'll be by Jocelyn Russell. It's gonna have a wingspan, we hope, of eight to nine feet, with a total height on the pedestal of eleven to twelve feet. And you could see a mock-up of the idea. A little bit about Jocelyn. These are two photos from Jocelyn with her mother, Phoebe Russell. She was a well-known Alamosa artist. And as you can see, she is standing in front of the same picture, first as a young child down at the left, and then as an adult with Phoebe. Jocelyn worked for fourteen years with Dr. Ben Kanishi. She started when she was twelve, in the seventh grade, as a, I think it was a job fair. And what first started as a stint cleaning cages became a real hands-on occupation. These are some of Jocelyn's photos. She has a real love of the cranes and a lot of wildlife in the San Luis Valleys, you can see. So, we wanted to share a little bit about the process of actually making a sculpture. It's called the Lost Wax Process. First, the clay is sculpted in miniature form, and then enlarged to what is known as a maquette. Then the clay is, a computer program actually scans the maquette, and then it is enlarged and milled in polyurethane foam, which is a precise enlargement of the maquette. The, a thin layer of clay is sprayed on the foam, and it's then sculpted and refined. And that's a picture of the bull that she did. And then the committee approves. This is the bull that was at the Audubon Zoo in New Orleans, Louisiana. Then, the pieces are then disassembled into pieces to build molds. And these, the pink, yeah, that's fine, you can go on. The pink is actually, those are actually the molds. And then molten bronze, at a whopping 2,000 degrees, is poured into the molds. After the bronze is poured and cooled, the molds are destroyed, and the pieces are welded together. Patina, oh, then that's, that's the final of the bull. And then patina is added. It's a heat process of oxidization using salts and acids. And these produce different colors. So, now, and Jocelyn did five elephants, five lions, and fifteen meerkats. They were, the lions and elephants are on the truck, the flatbed truck. And I don't think the delivery man knew what he was transporting until he got there. So, there they are, driving to New Orleans. They got a lot of honks and stares. There's installation at the zoo. It was actually in a fountain, in a water subject. So, it's actually in water. So, what we're talking about is a crane sculpture. We would take, once the funds are in place, would take twelve months to sculpt and twelve months to cast, which includes foundry time. And we're estimating the project to be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. So, what we're asking for this, from the city, is to help us with finding a location of the sculpture and approving that, installing the sculpture, including site preparation and equipment, plaque and pedestal maintenance, and insurance. Now, Jocelyn told me that plaque and pedestal maintenance is very low cost. It's usually waxing one time a year. And that's to prevent the bronze from becoming a green, get a greenish tint, and so it's worth doing. The role of the artist would be to create the monument. She would do all of that at cost, so there would be no cost for her time. It would just be the foundry cost that she would be asking for. She would develop a contract, of course, with logistics and with legalities that are needed. She's done this many, many, many times, so. And then she'd oversee every step, including logistics. Our role is, of course, publicity, and we plan to secure the funding for the sculpture and serve as liaison with the funders, the artist, and the city. These are some examples of her public monument installations. This is the, this is the zoo I told you about. This is Sergeant Reckless, who is in, this is the statue, sculpture in Camp Pendleton in California. She's also done this sculpture in Quantico, Virginia. And Secretariat, which is due to be installed and dedicated on October 14th of this year. And Jocelyn just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to bring one of her sculptures to Alamosa. I think it's been a dream of hers. And that's Jocelyn.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
Thank you so very much. Heather, and then I'll turn it over to council. Did you have any follow-up comments before I turn it to council?
No, just that I know when Kelly got the call, our office had a lot of excitement about this opportunity. And Jocelyn is, is famous, and she's a very, very skilled artist. And so, to have this opportunity, and the meaning that comes with it is an amazing gift for the community. And so, we were very excited when presented with this idea.
And I have to commend the city for the art. You know, I picked up a copy of the brochure, and I've seen the art around town. And I really commend the city for promoting art in our community. I think it really adds to, to the beauty, and people just really wanna see the art. So, I mean, I think it's very, very exciting that this is happening.
Thank you, thank you. Council Hensley, and then Council Carson?
Well, this is very exciting, and what beautiful work. And we were told not to forget the term "community beautification", so I'm not forgetting that. And so, this truly does add, without a doubt, to the beauty of Alamosa. And we're very lucky and honored, I think, that, to work with this partnership and to make this work, and it will be something that'll last forever in our community. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, this is definitely a permanent installation, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right.
I just wanna say thank you as well.
Sure.
And thank you for being a liaison. I think it goes great with our Artscape project. It fits right in, and it's very fitting. The cranes are beautiful. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you, Council Carson. Council Gregel, then Council Brawls, and then Council Daniel.
Mary, thank you.
All right.
And the GFWC group, you know, to take on a task like this, it's, this is incredible. And to see some of those sculptures that she's done, she's, wow, horrible and renowned, you know, and to bring something like that, that would put us on the map, so to speak, you know, for something like that.
Well, and you know, I know the timing is a little difficult sometimes to secure funding, but we felt like this was a real prime time, because I think once Secretariat is done, I think she's gonna get very, very busy, so.
Thank you.
All right.
I just wanna say thank you, I think it looks great, so, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, I can repeat everything that everyone has, but it really is a beautiful, beautiful project, and I'm so excited that she is willing and wanting to give back, and that your group has done so many wonderful things for our community as well, so thank you for that. I did have a question for the city. If, is there any concerns with, I know it'll be really a minimal cost to us, but is there any concern with that? Would that come out of the art fund, or would we need to budget for it differently? How would that work?
So, I think probably having a discussion of what the installation, 'cause I agree the plaque and those things are usually minor costs. And with the donations we're able to get through the art and still maintaining our budget, we could probably absorb those. We should probably talk about installation and what those costs look like, and look at bringing that back before council to see if we need to do a budget amendment or, or something like that. So, but it's an amazing opportunity.
Absolutely, and I don't want to be the downer on that. I think it's a wonderful project.
Well, and you know, a lot of times, as I said, she's had a lot of experience doing public installations all over. And I went to a dedication in San Diego where she did a police dog. And they had a lot of donations. The granite, beautiful granite base was donated. So, there are a lot of opportunities there, I think, for people to donate and do in-kind.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much.
And I too would like to thank you and your organization for all the wonderful works that you all do throughout our community. And this is truly beautiful, and we really appreciate you all thinking about the city. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All righty. Okay, council. Up next, we have business brought forward by city staff. Public Works.
I'll actually take this one, Mayor, because I've been working with the Community Energy Solar project in getting the lease, that's the subject matter of this agenda item, finalized. And so, what we have before council today is a request to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with Community Energy Solar for twelve acres just north of the cemetery, across the road from the cemetery. It will pull up shortly. No, I got, it just needs to switch to the attorney. Oh, there's something funny with this new computer. It's, it's on the lease. Thank you. And what the lease does is actually put in place something that had been started back, beginning in 2017. There was a, an understanding that council has already approved with a site management, site control agreement that allowed Community Energy Solar to investigate the site and to do permitting. And you just today approved on your consent agenda the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit to allow this solar farm to go in where it's going in. And the lease as developed is pretty much in final form. You may note in the council communication, I had raised a point about whether we, or you, would want to require security for the eventual, eventual removal of the equipment at the end of the lease term, which is projected to be fifty years. It's a thirty-year lease plus two ten-year renewal terms. And in discussions with Community Energy Solar, they are agreeable to that. We have finalized some language to do that. There was placeholder language in, and the language that we've ended up with is very similar. The only issue that is potentially outstanding were some changes that I made or proposed to be made to indemnity provisions in the lease. Community Energy Solar has not had final sign-off from their attorneys on those changes. So, what I would like to propose is that council authorize the city manager to sign the lease in substantially the form as attached to your agenda item tonight, subject to my approval that whatever we eventually end up with on those, on that language for indemnification is acceptable, and move forward from there so that we can get this project off the ground.
Thank you, Eric. Council Carson?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the lease with Alamosa Solar, with Alamosa South Solar, CSG LLC for the land north of the cemetery, additionally with Eric's input.
Okay.
I have a question about the motion.
Okay.
Including doing the security deposit as well? What the recommendation was?
Yes, with his recommendation.
Then I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have Parks and Recreation, a second reading of public and public hearing of Ordnance Number 202019.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy's making his way up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Ordnance 202019, this is our IGA with the Refuge to take care of the portions of the Malm Trail that are on Refuge property. A bit of news since our first reading, we did not get the federal lands access grant, so we will be starting with just our trail and parking area, signage, safety fencing, those kinds of things. Leave you open it up for hearing, or do you ask me questions now? I'm sorry, I'm unaware.
Certainly, council may have questions for you, and if not, the mayor will open it up for the public hearing.
Okay. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So, since we didn't get it, Andy, I think this is maybe the first one you haven't gotten, so I'm, like, I'm sad, but I'm okay with it. Can we reapply in the future? Did we get feedback?
They did give us some good feedback, and we certainly will reapply. Just unsure of the timeframe. It might not be a yearly thing, but we will certainly be looking to reapply because the project fit right in the purpose of the grant from our standpoint and our local Refuge personnel. So, we'll keep biting at their heels.
Thank you. At this time, I will open it up for a public hearing for Ordnance Number 20219. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please feel free to come up to the podium and do so. Okay, seeing that no one has come up. Okay, seeing that no one has come up, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Gregel.
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 202019.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Up next, we have up under City Manager Legal, a motion authorizing the city manager to sign a development agreement. Thank you, Heather.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We have been working with Manish Patel for the construction of a hotel downtown. He's currently tentatively looking at a Spring Hill Suites, which would be a very nice hotel to have in our downtown. But it didn't start with Mr. Patel. It actually started in 2012, even before I came to the city, when ACID and other community partners, including the city of Alamosa, worked to try to revitalize that corner at Sixth and State Avenue. Through community donations, funds from the city of Alamosa, the properties were purchased and demolished in order to redevelop that and make that shovel-ready is essentially the language that is used. In late 2017 is when Mr. Patel purchased that property in the hopes of constructing a hotel. He began the process with negotiating with La Puente for the buildings that housed the food bank in Adelante and negotiating with Oscar, can you open up the map that's attached to it? Open and negotiating with Oscar or Osko for the small, for the purchase of a small piece of vacant property he has in that area as well. However, when those negotiations were occurring, there is a gap between what Mr. Patel's business plan will allow for him to be able to have the numbers work for him and what the negotiating entities needed for them to move off of that property. When that gap became apparent, the city council authorized, sorry, we're just exploring our technology here. Council authorized the city manager to help with those negotiations in order to help bring a successful conclusion to that. The attached development plan is, encompasses what that direction was from city council. And so to identify the property, the property in light blue that's on the far left is what has been called the Pink Elephant Site. So, that is what Mr. Patel purchased from ACID. The green right next to it is owned by the city. And then to the right of that is the small piece of property owned by Oscar's. And then you can see the food bank, Adelante. And then the green on the far east is also owned by the city and as part of this negotiation, hotel change usually like a one-to-one parking, so the hotel that Mr. Patel's looking at putting here is about 89 rooms. So, he's not going to be able to meet that one-to-one. He, the change will probably understand since it's downtown, but he will need a little bit more of the city parking to try to get it closer to that one-to-one requirement. So, the agreement that's before council based on the previous discussion is to include the provision of the two city-owned properties. The responsibility to demolish the two buildings of Mr. Patel is successful in negotiating with La Puente, waiving the building permit fee and the provision of 233,000 to be paid to Mr. Patel over three years once the hotel becomes operational. So, that would be approximately 77,000 a year. We anticipate the hotel will probably bring in a little more than 60,000, so it won't, the additional taxes won't necessarily cover that 100%, but the economic impact was estimated to be pretty significant. When we look at the first year of operation, because Mr. Patel anticipates using 70% for the construction to be local, the impact, the direct impact would be $18 million. When you factor in the impact of multipliers, because those people will spend money, who spend money, it can be almost 32 million. And then following the years after construction, the direct economic impact is estimated at 12.5 million. When you add the multipliers in, it's about $21 million. And I think it's this information that prompted council to want to help with these negotiations.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, counselor. I thought someone was pushing the button. Counselor Carden? Carson?
I think, you know, we were pretty familiar with this issue at this point and unless anybody has questions, do you, do you have some questions? Go ahead.
Is that okay, mayor?
Go.
So, not to, not honestly to have questions, but I feel like the public hasn't heard some of our reasoning, other than what Heather just said, so I'd really like to be clear about that. We really believe that our downtown needs energy and energizing and we appreciate people coming in and being willing to work with us and work with the city. And so I just really wanted to kind of, I think we need to share some of the conversations we've had, because this has been an issue for us for a while and we've had a lot of processing time. And so I think, looking at this, it's like, oh my gosh, what are, you know, this is big. But the reason it's big is because of the financial impact that it can have and the economic opportunities that we have in our community. And I'm really appreciative of someone who's been willing to kind of go the long haul and really try to make this business plan work. And I don't think that's something people have gotten to hear. And so I think between the city staff and between Mr. Patel and his partners and then La Puente staff and Oscar's, like, it's been a process for them to come to an agreement. And I think what we can do as a city to help revitalize our downtown and bring more energy to it, not necessarily revitalize it, but bring more energy to the downtown and more people, I think that's just going to benefit us all.
Thank you, counselor. And can I share a little bit more, because I think that was a very good reminder of this is, is, this is the time to discuss publicly what went into weighing this decision. And I know council put heavily that Mr. Patel has a history of doing very successful projects in this community that last and contribute ongoing from an economic perspective to this community. And so it wasn't someone that just landed in Alamosa out of the blue and, and we didn't know much about, that he has a very solid history of his projects. I think the other part is, obviously, we have hotels in the community and we value all the hotels, but having the possibility of this type of hotel that's a chain, at this quality in your downtown is something any community across the nation would be really chomping at the, would really love to have. And, and so the location of it in the downtown was another factor, I think, that council waived heavily compared to if it was a hotel on the west end, so.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel and Heather and Counselor Gregel.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of comments. For years, once the businesses left those buildings there on the corner, it became an eyesore for the city. It became unsafe. We had problems with people going in, especially the corner building that was supposed to be, it was a really good hotel years and years back ago, being born and raised there. And like I said, once they left, then it became an eyesore. It, it, people were camping out in there. There's thoughts of maybe even people starting fires in there and stuff, so we've been dealing with this, and I've been here on council for a lot of years, we've been dealing with this probably a good 10, 15 years or so. So, it's, it finally got put together and now it's cleaned up and ready to go. And I think, once we put a hotel down there, it'll further anchor the downtown and start maybe some, a chain reaction of more economic development downtown, so I'm totally supportive of it.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you. Counselor Carson?
Thank you, counselors, for that. That was very, very well said and very well put. And it is, it's going to be an extremely beautiful addition to downtown, the beautification to the alleyways alone that are going to happen are incredible. So, with all that being said, I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a development agreement with Manish Patel for the construction of a downtown hotel.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just have one brief comment. I think with that downtown hotel is really helping reach the three parts of economic development, the attraction, retention, and expansion. I think that hotel has the potential to do all three of those. We are attracting a brand name to the community. We are expanding a current business's brand and we are also retaining the area and building up the downtown area, so I'm for it as well. So, please start voting, everybody.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, up next, we have the first reading of ordinance number 222019.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
As council knows, the city code of ordinances has a provision that allows the city to abate nuisances, to clean up weeds or clean up trash and rubbish if a landowner refuses to do so after being given notice to do so. And then it similarly provides that the city will collect from the landowner the costs of doing that abatement. Further on in the ordinances, it provides, they provide that the city clerk certifies to the county treasurer those amounts that are to be collected pursuant to the costs that the city incurred. And that doesn't make a whole lot of sense and in fact is not what we do because the city finance director is the person who certi, in general, certifies delinquent city accounts to the county treasurer for them to be collected on people's property taxes. So, this is just a housekeeping ordinance that clarifies that it's the finance director that's going to do that, it's not the clerk's responsibility.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance 222019 and we set it for a public hearing on October 2nd, 2019 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, looks like the last item under City Manager Legal, resolution number 182019.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
On April 3rd, 2019, city council approved resolution 8-2019 that established the city of Alamosa Standing Committee on Homelessness, otherwise known as the Alamosa Homeless Coalition. When establishing that and, and making the appointments, city council actually appointed two city council members instead of what was in the resolution of one. So, one of the things that this resolution would do would just be to modify that and indicate that we have two council members. Not that that was needed, but since we were making the second recommendation, we thought we'd go ahead and do that housekeeping as well. And the second recommendation comes from the homeless coalition as well as staff to recommend that we add one more seat and that it would be for someone representing housing, so just a professional that is involved with the housing. I've reached out to two of our agencies local and locally and both directors would, will be submitting an application if this does get passed. But when we're talking about homelessness, we felt that maybe that was an oversight in not having a seat for housing.
Okay. All right, council. Counselor Carson.
Go ahead. Counselor Gregel.
With that, I'll make the motion we pass resolution number 18-2019, mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? No? Okay, all right. Staff announcements?
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to share that we had indicated that due to the water situation that our ditch was no longer in priority, which impacted the ranch and the golf course. Thankfully, with some of the rain that we've been getting, the ditch is kind of back in priority. It's not a large amount of water, but we are able to start slowly charging the pond and that can help the situation out there. So, it's a bit of a sigh of relief, but we will continue to watch that. I also wanted to share this last weekend and so I'm glad that, I think Kelly is still here, or two weekends ago actually, was the art festival and, oh my gosh, so it's amazing, but taking these three events and putting them together really did achieve the synergy that we needed, but it also created a lot of work. And so, I think, I think staff was a little tired and, and we're doing some lessons learned and how can we change it next year and, and that type of thing. So, I just want to thank everyone and especially Kelly for everything that went into pulling that together and it ended on a very dramatic note with a sudden downpour and trying to get everything cleaned up and put where it needed to be. So, it was, it was an amazing couple of days and we've heard a lot of great stuff from the artists and people feeling like there's a lot of excitement and we also have a lot of things we know we can make some improvements on. And so that feedback was just as helpful, so we're looking forward to next year. Eric and I are attending a closing tomorrow on the Alamosa Reparion Park and so this has been a long process with Andy's leadership and our partners in the community to make this a reality. I think you've gotten a calendar invite for a ribbon cutting that will be on October 15th. We're going to be putting together a little bit of a map to show you where to go and park for that and you won't have to wander around because it's, it's a big piece of property. So, that is coming up. I wanted to give you a reminder that the CML district meeting is just coming Tuesday, the 24th, from 4:00 to 8:00 in San Luis. Some of us might need to leave that a little bit early to come back for the homeless coalition. I also wanted to share, September 25th, we've got the Malm Trail Walk and so we're also going to send information on where to park and how, and where to meet for that, so we don't have people going every which way. And then also October 8th is Meet the Candidate Forum and so just a reminder on that. And as Harry makes his way up to talk about the Craft Water Tower, the last thing I wanted to share is having our new Internal Economic Development Director has done wonders for the interest in our facade program. So, not only have we exceeded the 10,000 that was in the budget, we were able to get a grant for 5,000 and she has interest from even more to where if we could do a budget amendment in the future for about 2,000, we could get two more businesses in there making improvements to the exterior of their buildings. And so unless I hear any grumbling, I might let them go ahead and do the 2,000 and bring a budget amendment. But it's been, she gave me some history, in 2017, we had one business take advantage of it. In 2018, we had three. And then, so for 2019, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight businesses. So, just really want to give hats off to Kathy and Dez, who also helps with the paperwork and coordination of that, so. Harry, if you want to talk about Craft Tower?
So, you might have noticed a little work going on Craft Tower. Back in 2017, we-
Can you talk into the mic a little bit, Harry?
We hired Maguire Iron to recote the interior of the water tower. And they completed the process and a year later for the warranty inspection, we hired a third-party service, their KLM Engineering out of, I think it's actually a state back east, that we hired divers to come in and dive inside the tower and assess the work for the, for the one-year warranty. While they were in the tank, they identified some of, some of the problem areas, the application didn't meet the manufacturer's specification. So, Maguire, representing the city, made a recommendation to us to have Maguire Iron come back this spring, drain the tank and fully assess it and make the repairs at that time. KLM, once, once we drained the tank this spring, KLM would start looking over everything and there was a bigger picture to, to the problem and they didn't come prepared, Maguire didn't come prepared to actually recote the whole, the whole interior and KLM instructed the city not to accept it. So, we went ahead and refilled the tank with Maguire coming back this fall. They started about three weeks ago and they completely drained the tank, completely stripped all the painting, the primer, took it down to bare metal with KLM supervising them, representing the city. Recode the tank, it's back, fully painted. There's a cure process of 10 days and we're waiting on some seals. Once we get that in place, we should have the, the tank sanitized and back online, possibly, the goal is Friday, the 27th, so next Friday. So, with, with KLM's help, we were able to- So with, with KLM's help, we were able to avoid a problem in the future, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
And this is Harry's first meeting as the official Public Works Director.
So I'm not a very good negotiator. I think when Heather offered me the position, I said, you know, I don't mind all the fieldwork, but if I don't have to public speak, you know, I didn't win.
Well, congratulations, sir.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, do you want to follow up? Anyone want to follow up with anything? Counsel Carson? Okay, no. Just real quick, I did get a chance to participate. Kelly, you and your team and the whole Alamosa staff did a wonderful job on the art festivities that weekend. And the cool thing about it, though, I got a chance to meet a lot of the artists, and we have repeat artists coming back, and they're so excited, and they talk about how wonderful a job that we do in our community hosting that event, so keep up the great work. All right.
I just wanted to make a comment. I was approached by the county administrator today, and she just wanted to thank us, thank council for the beautification of the northeast or northwest inner side of the intersection at the airport, where one of our Watersmart's projects is at. They were pretty impressed with it, and they really wanted to convey their appreciation.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and go to counselor comments, so we'll start with that. Okay, good. All right. Counselor.
Okay, so I was just going to comment that I think next Friday and Saturday is our retreat. And so I thought it would be kind of cool, I noticed there's been a lot of different groups that take their picture on Fridays wearing Adam State green. And so since we'll be together on Friday, is maybe we could wear either an Adam State shirt or Adam State green, so we could take a picture to share.
Okay.
To show support for Adam State.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good idea. Counselor Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I also want to say the art festival was amazing, so thank you for that. And I actually did have a follow-up to Ruthie Brown's comments earlier about the landscaping and just kind of an update on those Watersmart's projects. Obviously, one has been completed, and if we could have an update, that would be fantastic.
If, if you're open, I think Andy is prepared to be able to give an update tonight, so. Here he comes.
All right, quick, quick update. I believe the, the two that have been completed are that airport one and then our Richardson split there. We had a little bit of a leak at that Richardson one, but we've taken care of it. Actually, Ruthie notified us of it, and we were able to take care of it. It was just a, a little minor break. Olympian Park, we, it's, it's been a, we'll have to update our design just with what was done there with the roadwork. So we're working on that. Let's see, there's seven of them, so help me go down the list here.
So South Gateway.
The South Gateway, so we have a couple that are in the CDOT right away. So I've been working with CDOT on how to proceed with that. It's kind of a permitting process, so I've contacted CDOT. They're going to look at our designs. That one's a little tough because of the debris from plows and blow sand and this or that. So we might be looking at a little bit of reduced landscaping there and more a city sign and rock and, and something we can do there. That's a tough location just with the, the plows and, and where it is. We also don't have water there, but we are looking at alternatives. Is there some kind of self-contained watering system? Or one day, can we get water there, so we'd be able to, to support more live stuff?
I think Boyd Park.
So Boyd Parks, I, NRG is, is tackling that one. I know they're in the midst of it right now. That's certainly reducing our footprint over there and also around the tennis courts and, and by the parking lot. So I don't know if they're completed yet, but that one's underway. And then obviously, City Hall out here, they're in, in the midst of doing.
And then Sunset Park, I think, was the CDOT getting the permit for that as well.
Sunset and the South Gateway, which is that little triangle by Eve's Restaurant, those are the two that, that I'm working with CDOT on to get permitting before we can proceed.
Thank you.
Thanks for the help.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Andy. Counsel Gregel.
A couple of comments. That one, the landscaping over at the airport, you could, it really sticks out. And to see the trees are starting to come back, all those trees have been planted, it looks good as you drive down. We were down there for that ribbon cutting, and when you come back, you could see like it's like a pass, well, it's good to see the trees back. And there were, while they were doing the construction, they took out a bunch of those trees, so it's good to see, doing a good job there, Andy. Secondly, I, I wanted to thank the county commissioners. I had a chance to visit with Helen Sigmund, Darius and Mike here, and pointed out that Stockton does not belong to the city, it belongs to the county. So they looked into it, and we got it paved, so it's paved now. So I wanted to thank them for taking that initiative, and a lot of people in that area, it's, it's a street that's really used up in that area. So they did a good job, and I wanted to thank them for, for taking that initiative and helping us out, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Okay, if we don't have any further business, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.